Good morning. It's June 3, 2025, and you're at the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag and then move in if you remain standing for the invocation from Pandit Naveen Sharma from the Hindu Temple of Modesto.
Good morning, everyone. We are from Hindu Temple of Modesto on College in Orangeburg, and this is Pandit Naveen Sharma, our priest, who will be doing the prayers today. He just blew the kong shell to create positive energy here and also to bring the gods in our presence. In the spirit of unity, peace, and humanity, I offer a Hindu prayer that expresses goodwill and harmony for all. We pray to Lord Ganesha to remove our hurdles and clear the path. Now we pray to goddess Lakshmi, so give us financial success and good fortune. And now we pray to Lord Shiva, grant us inner strength, healing, and protection from danger. Everyone on this earth be happy, healthy, and free of suffering. Om. Peace, peace, peace. May this meeting be guided by wisdom, compassion, and mutual respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We're going to be moving on to presentations, and I've been under the weather for the last week, so we're going to be sharing duties up here today. The first one is June 2025 as Pride Month in Stanislaus County. Roman Scanlon, Executive Director of Cal Pride Stanislaus.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Roman Scanlon. I'm the Executive Director for Cal Pride Stanislaus. I'm joined today with our CEO, John Gary, for Cal Pride, as well as some of our other coworkers. I want to start off by thanking you for giving us opportunity to speak today and to be able to accept this. So, a little bit about us. Cal Pride began as nothing more than an idea shared by our CEO, John Gary, around his kitchen table. John wasn't planning to build a movement, just planning and trying to imagine what it would look like locally here in Modesto, if there was a safe space, a place for healing, belonging, and community for LGBTQ+ people, a place that was free of judgment, free of shame, and free of the stigma. The idea quickly turned into action, and over time, that action became something more powerful. What started as the LGBTQ+ collaborative quickly grew into our organization today, Cal Pride, starting here in Modesto, expanding into Merced, and then up into Sonora. We currently cover seven counties and serve over 15,000 members a year. We offer peer support services, harm reduction, HIV and Hep C testing, youth programming, and advocacy efforts that touch thousands of lives each and every day, as well as here. What began as a conversation around a kitchen table has now become something much more greater, a place where every LGBTQ+ person can not only find care and community, but also finally have a seat at the table, like what we're doing today. A lot of people always question, why are LGBTQ centers so important for communities? There's many more than the six reasons that are up here. There's thousands and thousands of reasons, but the centers are more than just buildings. They're actual lifelines. For many in our community, especially in rural areas and underserved areas, these centers are the first places where people are seen, heard, and supported. LGBTQ+ individuals face higher rates of discrimination, higher rates of mental health challenges, homelessness, substance use, and discrimination in both healthcare, employment, and in housing. These disparities are not just statistics. They're actual realities that we confront every single day with our members that come through our doors. Centers like Cal Pride exist to close those gaps, to provide affirming care, connect people to the resources here in our community. These centers create a place where people can not just survive, but actually thrive in the community. So, some of our services. We offer peer support, group support, education, food and housing, health and health education, as well as provide a drop-in center where they could come in, do their laundry, take a shower, and get food for the day. At Cal Pride, our services are rooted in compassion, community, and in harm reduction. We offer peer support, group support, HIV/HEPC testing, health education, referrals to hundreds, if not thousands, of essential services like housing, legal aid, behavioral healthcare. Our Medi-Cal Certified Peer Support Specialists meet people every single day where they're at, whether they're navigating recovery, coming out, seeking healthcare, or just needing somebody to talk to. We also host support groups. These are just some of our other services. There's so many of the lists that we actually work with that it would take way too long to go through each one, so just getting to touch on some of the top ones for today. But we offer group supports for everything from healthy relationships to substance use disorder group therapy. Everything that we do is focused around our community and our partners that we work with in this community, help us to achieve a full health, mind, body, soul, spirit, everything for the person, the individual, that is looking for services here locally in your community. Some of our other services that we offer. So, through our advocacy, the impact of Cal Pride on our community is seen each and every day in the lives that we touch, from helping someone find housing after being rejected by their family, to supporting a young person through coming out, through providing lifesaving health education and testing, as well as prep and pep navigation services. We offer vital resources to those who often, too many times, fall through the cracks. For many, Cal Pride is the first place that they will ever feel safe, feel seen, and feel heard. Our presence has reduced isolation, has built resilience, and creates connections across generations. Beyond direct services, we become a trusted voice in local advocacy, shaping policies and partnerships that make our entire region more inclusive. The ripple effect of our work doesn't stop just at the doors of our building. It extends into homes, into schools, into health clinics, and communities across the Central Valley region. Pride Month is more than a celebration. It's a declaration that our lives, our stories, our community actually matters. It's a time to honor those who came before us, to stand beside those who are still fighting for equality, for equity, and it's to uplift the voices that are too often silenced. For the county of Stanislaus to recognize Pride Month and the work that we do over at Cal Pride, it's extremely meaningful to not only me, my coworkers, but to the people that we serve daily, your community members. It reflects growing commitment to inclusion, compassion, and justice, and most of all, it sends a very clear message that diversity is not a weakness, but a strength, and every single person deserves to live with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you, Roman.
Well, Roman, thank you so much, and thanks for everybody on your team that's here. It's been my honor and privilege for the last few years. John, who, you know, you started off with the vision that he had at a table conversation, but what it's worked into and it's what it's become. And so every year, I have the opportunity to go visit the Pride Center and acknowledge this, and today, it's great that we're acknowledging here at the Board Chambers. And I think that it's very important that everybody feels and understands the reason that the need for these type of centers are needed in a community for advocacy. Obviously, if there's any discriminatory behavior, that you feel welcomed, appreciated, and you're a part of Stanislaus County, and we appreciate you for everything you do for the residents here in Stanislaus County. Thank you.
Thank you. And so you said you're appreciative that the board is having June as Pride Month, but I would tell you just the opposite. We need to be thankful for you and the community making a difference with people that, especially those six points that you pointed out in your presentation. I hope we get a copy of the presentation, but really, if people are struggling out there and there's a way through peer support or something else to help those people, you guys are doing the real work. So, again, on behalf of Stanislaus County, very appreciative. Roman and I sit on Project Resolve together, which is really, originally was intended for law enforcement, so that they can better understand the community. And it's all different people in the community. It doesn't matter. Roman's a representative of the LGBTQ+ community, but it's always interesting because we separate into tables, and it's very good for me to hear perspectives of young people, Latinos, people of any color, along with the LGBTQ community, just because, you know, it's not in my normal life when we're up here working. We talk about health, and we talk globally, and getting into the more microcosm of what's happening in our community has been really insightful for me. So I appreciate that about you, Roman. So anyways, again, on behalf of the board, we're very proud to name June as Pride Month and appreciate all you guys do.
All right. Next up is recognition of the 2025 Employee Mentors. Tina Roche.
All right. Good morning, Chairman, Board members. Tina Roche, Assistant Executive Officer. Today, we're here to recognize the 2024-2025 Employee Mentors. We would like to just take a few moments to highlight the program and the contributions that they are providing to the community. So just a brief program history. This was actually started in 1998 by previous Assistant Executive Officer Keith Boggs. Those of you that know Keith, he was very, very passionate about this program. It became an official county program in 1999. Unfortunately, we did have a few years that it was paused due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We were able to relaunch in 2022, and then in 2023, we partnered with Sierra Vista Child and Family Services to expand the program. Just a couple of community impacts. From this last year, we had 210 students that were mentored. This was an increase of 95 from last year. So I think that's a pretty impressive statistic for the program. The mentors contributed approximately 2,000 hours. We increased from six to eight of the Modesto City Schools, and we welcomed 14 new mentors into the program, right now with a total of 54 serving in the program. When we partnered with Sierra Vista, we were able to add some new elements into the program. There are monthly student updates that are provided to the teachers. There is administrative support that is helping make the program more efficient and effective. There are weekly programming and goal-setting information that is shared out with the mentors, and then there's also ongoing training and education for the mentors. A little more of the program data. So you can see from last year, there was just 90% - 95% of the mentees said that they would like to be mentored again next year. There was, as I pointed out in the previous slide, almost an 83% increase in the number of students being mentored. Almost 92% of the mentees stated that their mentor was really helping them in reaching their goals, and almost 97% of the teachers said that they would recommend this program to other students. So rather than share more statistics, I would like to just play a short clip so that you can hear from some of the mentees, in their own words, what this program means to them.
That she's kind, because I can see her every Monday. She's nice, caring, and funny. That he's so nice and kind, and he's smart.
That she makes me happy. She helps me learn how to read.
She's nice, sweet, and funny.
She's nice to me. She talks nice, and she makes me feel safe over there.
Helped me with my words.
She helped me read long words and stuff, and helped me concentrate.
Usually math a lot.
She helped me with my feelings.
Confident. She said never to give up, even though you want to give up.
My journal and my math homework sometimes.
My math last year because I didn't really know a lot of math, so he helped me with it.
Reading, writing, and confidence.
I got better at my reading because when I first started, I was a really bad reader.
Thank you for being here for me.
So that was much nicer than hear me read off statistics. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Ann Allison, who's here in the audience today. Ann, you want to, can you wave? I know you don't want to come up front, but you and your team and the program, I mean, it has just really enhanced what our staff have been able to do with this. So thank you. Thank you very much. I also want to just thank my assistant, Markel Roche. She's been really leading this program through the year, and she actually designed the recognition pin this year for the mentors and incorporated in the Sierra Vista logo for it. So thank you so much. We are going to be recognizing all of the county employees that volunteered this year, but first, we'd like to highlight one mentor in particular, Ali Arshad. Ali has been with the Department of Environmental Resources for 26 years. He's been serving as a mentor for 15 years. He is very dedicated to education. He holds a bachelor's degree, master's degree. He's continually getting education and certificates, and he has also been named as Mentor of the Year previously with this program. So he is so dedicated to this program and education and giving back to the community that this year, he donated $1,000 to Sierra Vista to help support this program. And so we just wanted to give a shout out to him and thank you for your dedication. And Ali. And those of you that get the chance to interact with him, his energy is just infectious, just in general, but particularly with this program. So thank you. So on the screen, you'll see the name of the 21 employees that participated in the mentor program this year, and we just really want to thank you again for all of your efforts. This, it really does make an impact on these children, and you could see from the clips, it's just, you know, you just, you never know what that little spark's going to do for them down the road. So thank you all. If we could have the mentors come up front, we have your pin for you, and if any of the board members would like to come down and take a photo, we'd love to have you down here.
So before we take a picture, I always have a story, right? If you've been around long enough, I always have a story about something. So the other day, when I saw this was coming up on our agenda, I called Keith Boggs. Keith Boggs is the, I think, 1998 started this program. Let's get half on the other side, so we get everyone in there. So it's his birthday, and so I call him and I find his, you know, he doesn't have a county phone, obviously, anymore, and he retired back in 2020. So he doesn't answer. He calls me back, and I have a 20-second conversation. Happy birthday, Keith. Gosh, I miss you, blah, blah, blah. And he said, hey, can I ask who this is? Like, it's a veto. Anyways, so I told him about this presentation and how thankful we are that we have employees, because employees are not getting paid. They're doing this because of the love of the community, trying to help out. And I think that's what sets us apart from other counties. This program has gotten more successful. Again, Sierra Vista has a lot to do with that, but it's people trying to make a difference every single day of their life to make our community better, more livable, just a better place for all, encompassing. And so Ali gives $1,000 to a program he believes in. I think that says it all, and he's been the past Mentor of the Year, as well as he's a perfect county employee, because when people like me can't do their, can't do their input right, he actually came inside the house and showed me how to use my own computer to input the data. So that, just all the way around. But again, on behalf of the board, this has been such a successful program. Supervisor Withrow gets the last word, because he's actually been doing this for many years, along with his wife, and he talks of, well, I don't want to instill any earth thunder, but he talks of really the impact and maybe what's needed in the community.
You were supposed to tell me I was supposed to talk. You didn't tell me I was supposed to talk. So yeah, we haven't done it the last few years. My wife and I, now we have eight grandkids, soon to have 10, and that's what happens. But I'll tell you, it was, it made such a difference for us, and I just want to say for everybody who is involved in this now, or who's thinking about getting involved in it, it's community-changing. It really is. A lot of these kids, they see nothing except from their house to the school and back to their house. That's their whole life, just that little area, back and forth between their house. And to have somebody come to their school and expose them to the rest of the world to some extent, you know, we, you help them with their math, you help them with their reading, things like that, but what you're really doing is just helping them with their life. And a lot of them are just dying for some attention and some love, and what you guys do is just amazing. And so I encourage, I thank all of you who are doing this and everybody who's a part of this, but I encourage all of us here. I mean, it's hard, but we're all busy, right? We all have so many things to do, but darn it, if you, just what a difference you can make in one of these kids' life. It really is life-changing. And so I encourage all of you just to take that extra hour, once a week, if you can, and go there and work with these kids, and you'll see, like I said, not necessarily math or reading, but just talking with them and getting to know them and them get to know you just makes a difference in their lives. So anyway, thank you all very much for all you do.
All right. Thank you all. Moving on to Item 3, Stanislaus County Employee Retirement Association Update, and Tom Stottlemyre will be presenting. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks so much.
All good news, right?
It is. It is good news this year.
I love it.
Thanks so much for having us and giving us the opportunity to discuss an update on StanSarah, and it's great to be included as part of the presentation you have this morning, and how we can maybe have a positive impact on the community as well. I'm Tom Stottlemyre, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Stanislaus County Employees Retirement Association, better known as StanSarah. I want to start out by thanking the Board of Supervisors and the county administration for your partnership, and also for the support of StanSarah on behalf of all of our members. Our mission, under the direction of our Board of Retirement, is to provide and promote comprehensive and financially sound retirement in a professional, efficient, and courteous manner. We manage retirement benefits for well over 11,000 members and growing. The majority of those members are county employees or former county employees and their beneficiaries. We currently manage assets just over $3 billion, which are used to meet the obligations to the members of the system under the California County Employees Retirement Law. We make annual payments to retired members currently of over $180 million, and that's a growing figure, and we also support our active members and their beneficiaries regarding their retirement planning activities. I'm here today with my colleague, Carmen Guzman, and today, we're going to plan to give you a brief update on StanSarah's planned funding, financial activity, and administrative functions. Carmen's our Retirement Fiscal Manager for StanSarah. Last year, we focused on some of our investment allocation changes and our participant engagement, and this year, we're going to talk a little bit about some of our fiscal services, as well as our administrative processes. With that said, we'll go into the With that said, we'll go into the presentation and kind of do a brief update on where we stand. So the plan, and you'll recall from prior year's updates, you know, this is something that we are always thinking long term, and things are going to change slowly over time. And so we're really currently on track and on track of what we've reported to this board in prior years. The plan is currently 76% funded, so we do, do still have a gap to close in terms of having enough money available to meet all of the obligations in the long term. But we're in a very good place in terms of being on that correct track, track to get fully funded. The current plan that we're under with the, with the assumptions that we have in place, and we'll talk in a little bit of detail about that, will get us to a place where the majority of that unfunded liability we have is scheduled to be paid off around 2038 currently. That can change over time, but we are on a healthy track and have good provisions to, to be in, in the right place to meet the, the obligations to the members. We do annually do a, an evaluation, working very closely with our actuaries on how much, not only how much money do we have available, but also what are going to be our obligations now and into the future. We project those using a lot of different assumptions. And every three years, we do what's called an experience study, where we take a very hard look at all of the numbers, the real experience of what people are getting paid, how many people are coming into the system, how many people are leaving the system. And we decide, are, you know, are we on the right track in terms of the assumptions that we're making so that, so that we do have the right provisions in place? And so that was in 2024, we conducted that work through our actuaries. And for the most part, the, what we found with our assumptions is that we're in a good place. We did have a few, I'll call them tweaks to our assumptions based on that experience study. The main tweak that we made really related to the fact that in recent years, we have seen a little bit more of an increase in pay to employees over time than we would normally see. And that's a trend that's not necessarily unique to Stan Slough County. That's something that especially governments have been undergoing, not only related to inflation, but also related to the fact that there was, there was been a significant period of time since about 2010 where governments tended not to have increases that were even at the, the assumed levels. So we have made some, some changes, and the board directed and approved those changes after the experience study was conducted. And what that tends to do when you've raised those assumed increases over time a little bit is it'll increase our liabilities, meaning there's going to be more money to pay out in the future due to those increases that are above the assumed rates. In terms of our planned financials for the year, Carmen's going to cover that in detail, but they really were steady and, and everything was on track and, and as expected, we do have a very stable program. And, and obviously the county is a very stable presence in terms of funding the annual obligations that are needed. And then in terms of administration, this is also something Carmen will focus on, but we've really been focused over a number of years now on improving our technology, modernizing our services, pension calculations. To us, they're exciting, but to a lot of people, they're boring, but they're, they're fairly complex. And the automation through the technology is a huge help to us. And we're now taking advantage of the, the implementation of that technology and becoming a more efficient organization. We're, we're going to see cost savings as a result of those technology improvements and better quality in terms of what we deliver to our members, better resources for our members to take advantage of and understand their benefits for, to help them have a secure retirement. This chart is likely familiar to you all, and it shows kind of over time, not only our investment returns, which are critical to meeting the needs of the members, but also kind of how our planned funding has changed over time. And it's actually been pretty steady. We're in the early stages we, of paying off that unfunded liability that was re-amortized back in around 2020, 2021 time period. So it's about a 15-year process that it will take to, to get that initial amortized unfunded liability paid off. And that takes us to that 2037, 2038 timeframe, you know, if, if every year kind of goes as planned. And of course, we all know every year doesn't go exactly as planned, but over time, we would expect that there'd be, there will continue to be growth in the assets. This slide shows like, you know, the board has chosen as part of the experience study to keep our assumed rate of return or our discount rate at 6.75. And you can see over time, the, the return on the assets does hover in that area. Over some periods of time, it'll look a little better. Over some periods of time, it'll look a little bit worse. But Stan Sarah is right in about the middle, the median of where other public pension plans are at 6.75. There's been a trend over time to reduce that rate, to be a little bit more conservative and make sure that plans can meet the obligations, you know, without having to always pump in additional funding. So that, that's always a good thing to keep in mind, but generally speaking, in terms of the investment process, 6.75 has been, been, you know, about the right place over a long period of time. That all kind of relates to ultimately what, what the board here will approve today, which is the contribution rates that are needed to support individuals and their, and their future retirements. You can see over the period of time since 2017, when, when the, some of the assumption changes that were a little bit larger were implemented over a couple of year period, we've had a pretty steady, you know, hovering in the, in the low to mid 30s in terms of the, the aggregate percentage that is, that is needed from the employer's side. Members, of course, contribute to the, to their retirement as well, in aggregate around 10%. But this has been, we've seen over, again, over the last several years, a little bit more inflation, a little bit more of an increase in pay, and that's resulted in a very slight uptick in the contributions that are required to fund the plan. This is something we're going to track, obviously closely year to year, and meet with the county and work closely together with them around preparing for if there are going to be any changes to those rates. In terms of the experience study and diving a little bit further into that, most of the major economic assumptions, the board chose to keep in place. There's an assumption of inflation at a two and a half percent clip, wage growth overall at a 2.75%. And as we mentioned, the discount rate or the expected return on, on assets at 6.75%. Those are very key assumptions that are applied. It doesn't mean that we're expecting every year to hit exactly those numbers, but what it means is that over a very long period of time, 20 to 30 years, those are what we see as the targets and the likely, likely averages or outcomes based on policies and past experience. And that's something that the board will continue to evaluate. It's typically done on that three-year cycle, but the board can always take action to make changes if, if something happens, either in the economy or, or with the government policy that would dictate a change there. There was a slight uptick in COLA growth. And as I mentioned, individuals, as we look at their salary data, we've seen higher rises lately than over the last several years than would be these averages. And that's resulted in the increased liabilities. But again, not at a dramatic rate, but, but at a, at a slightly, you know, modest rate in terms of the increases to liabilities. The largest impact are those merit pay increases that individuals have received. So not just the annual cost of living increases, but any equity pay increases that have occurred. And I know the county is, you know, currently going through the process of negotiating with several employment groups, and those will have an impact as those equity pay increases hit. It will have those modest increases in liabilities to the, to the pension benefits that are, that are required to be paid out over time as well. These two charts kind of show you a projection into the future based on the assumptions that we've laid out. And the top chart kind of clearly shows how those contribution rates are projected to come down eventually over time. So we've got kind of a steady rate over the next 10 to 12 years, and then a precipitous drop once that initially unfunded liability that, that was amortized in 2021 gets paid off. So that's that target around 2037, 2038, where we anticipate a significant drop in the required contributions from the county. And this is something we talk about with the county. We're, we're too far out from that to say, hey, let's make any change to that. But I think as we get closer to that date, if our projections hold and, you know, we, we're able to, you know, reach the, the projected returns on the assets, inflation stays in check, all these different types of things that we can't necessarily predict completely. But as we get closer to that, we could talk about perhaps smoothing out that impact. But ultimately, you know, right now, the county is paying off that unfunded liability. We could get to a place where they're just funding the cost of the benefits that, that occur year to year. The bottom chart shows the impact on planned funding. We, of course, want to get to a place where we're 100% funded, but I also like to reiterate the point that just because we're not 100% funded, doesn't mean that we don't have a lot of confidence that we're on the right track and to, to meet the obligations to our members. With that said, I'm going to let Carmen come up and talk about the planned financials and some of our administrative activities.
Thank you, Tom. Good morning. I'm Carmen Guzman, the Financial Services Manager. And I'm going to go ahead and give you guys an overview of Stan Sarah's plan financials. As of June 30th, 2024, total assets were $2.87 billion, which was an increase from fiscal year 2023, which was at $2.66 billion. This increase is made up of employer contributions increasing by 11%, which was a total of $116.3 million as of June 30th, 2024. Members' contributions also increased by 6%, was, which was a total of $35.2 million. And investment gains increased about 42%, which was a total of $246.2 million. Benefits increased from $171.8 million to $181 million. And administrative costs did go down from $4.4 million to $4.3 million. As of June 30th, 24, the actuarial liability was $3.74 billion, and this represents the amount of benefits Stan Sarah owes at that time. This $3.74 billion was made up of $2.62 billion for general employees, which was an increase of 5%. And $1.12 billion for safety employees, which was an increase of 7%. And the unfunded liability is approximately $870 million, and that is due to our total assets being less than our total liabilities. And Stan Sarah is a negative cash flow plan, which means the contributions we receive from the employers and employees do not cover the cost to pay the benefits or to run this pension system. To cover that shortfall, we do use cash flow method bonds. I'm going to move on to the next slide to cover our administration highlights. Stan Sarah is currently reviewing their bylaws and policies. We're currently going through that process. And we're also, we're also in the midst of an actuarial audit, where we hire an actuary to audit our actuary to ensure our assumptions that they are using are in the best interest for Stan Sarah. And we are planning to issue two requests for proposals in fiscal year 26, one for actuarial services and another for financial audit services. And we, we also enhanced our member portal, which we'll be doing in the upcoming years as well to make it user-friendly for our members. Items that we added are the 1099 R. tax forms, monthly pay statements, real-time contribution statements, and estimates for active members. We are also using technology to automate it processes, which improves accuracy and straightens internal controls. And the Board of Retirement also approved the budget for fiscal year 26, which was a 15% decrease from prior year's budget. This decrease was mainly driven from reallocating costs that were eligible to go to investment expense versus our administrative expenses, and also restructuring Stan Sarah due to technology efficiencies. Lastly, we're working to strengthen partnerships with key stakeholders and improve our internal and, our internal documentation and controls. Strong relationships with the county, our vendors, and professional service providers are essential, and internal controls protect the assets and interest of our members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
All right, first, thank you, Tom and Carmen, for your presentation. Very good. You guys are doing a great job, bringing up job there. And I don't think, we stress enough just how important what you guys are doing is, you know, you, you are managing the livelihood in retirement of all of our employees, basically, how, how critical that is for all of us, all of our employees here, and the other agencies that are a part of this, this Stan Sarah. And so it's just, it's just that important. Couple of things I always like to point out. First of all, everyone thinks accountants are boring, actuaries are, you know, they're the most boring. I say that every time. You can't get any worse than that. So I'm always happy that I have one step above the actuaries. Sorry, I say that every year, but appreciate the work that they do. And there's so many factors and variables involved in these calculations, as you kind of illustrated there. I mean, there's just so many different levers that are being pushed that affect where this goes and ultimately affects the dollar amount that the county has to contribute into the defined benefit pension plan. And to talk about that a little bit, the, again, this might be boring for people, but I'd love to point this out, that, you know, in, in the private sector, we have, there's three types of plans, really. There's profit sharing plans, money purchase pension plans, and defined benefit pension plans. Profit sharing plans, in essence, 401Ks type of things, money purchase pension, are contributions that the employer makes. And a ton of my clients have profit sharing plans, money purchase pension plans, but they're voluntary, that they can be made every year or not, depending on how well the company did that year. So your company has a bad year, there's not this extra money to give to the employees into their retirement plan, it just doesn't happen. And so, and in that, a profit sharing and money purchase pension plan, that contribution is just based on your earnings for that year, and it's up to 25%, and they can make a contribution into your plan. And, and then as it grows or doesn't grow, that's all you have for you when you retire. A defined benefit plan, which is a different animal, which we have here at the county, which in the private sector, we kind of, that, that went by the wayside about 40 years ago because it was basically bankrupting companies. Defined benefit plans were tough to maintain. And a defined benefit plan, the contribution is based on what we need for you to have when you retire on that day. So, so it changes, not based on your current earnings, it's based on when the day comes when you retire, you've had this many years of service, based on your salary, you're going to get this for sure for the rest of your life. And so when you think about that, that is a major liability that we have to take on. And so when individuals come to work for government, for agencies that have defined benefit pension plans, it is such a perk that people just have to realize, and that kind of offsets a lot of times salaries, because the private sector, they can pay more, they'll pay more because they don't have that liability, that, that type of retirement plan costs to the company. Or in, in the government section, you know, sector, we, we have this giant liability. As you, as you point out, we have this unfunded liability at this point of $800 million approximately that has to somehow be funded in order, if everybody were to stop working today and it was to be over, we wouldn't be able to pay out everybody's retirement plan. So, so built into the contribution that the county, I feel like a teacher up here. I'm sorry, guys, that I'm doing this, but I just want everybody to understand, it's built into the contribution that the county makes every year. We've built in a percentage, a portion of that percentage to get us to the point, like you said, 12 years from now, that hopefully we'll have totally funded the unfunded liability. And then from that point forward, just be covering every year our contribution to cover that liability for each year. So, so it's a big obligation for the county, for the taxpayers, right, to do this, but it is a great perk for all of our employees to have that you just don't get in the private sector. So for what that's worth, not that that makes anybody feel better or worse, but, but it is just, I just love to point that out, the difference between the private sector and the government sector. And then just how hard it is for us, for the actuaries, for you guys, to, to calculate these numbers and try to get us to a point where we're 100% funded going forward. So that being said, that So that being said, thank you, guys, for all you do. It's a rough job. It's a thankless job. But I know you help so many of our employees, and again, the other individuals that work for other agencies that are a part of this plan, and help them with their lives, basically, when the day comes when they're getting ready to retire and figuring out if they're going to be able to afford to do that. So thank you, guys, for all you do. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Big mention. I concur, Supervisor Withrow, with your comments. I would just, the thing I'd add, I think you have a lot of employees who do very much appreciate this benefit. Essentially, what happens is the county ends up taking on the risk of the investments, you know, gains and losses. And that creates a very secure, you know, path for individuals, employees who are contributing to the community in all the different ways that county employees do. So there is a huge benefit, I think, that matters to employees and to the community. And you've kind of hit the nail on the head with your comments about, you know, that is a special perk that most people can't get in the private sector anymore.
I could actually sit and listen to the accountant on items like this, that excitement, what's going on. So I, when I go speak to community groups, I always say, we've been so cautious over the years about not incurring debt in the county. On the general fund, I think we've got maybe an air conditioning unit that we're getting paid back. There's just literally a couple of internal borrowings. And then I always gloss over and say, excluding the pension debt, because $870 million is a lot of money because of Peppera. Because, oh, and then the other thing is, the reason there's 870 million with the county is because of decisions that we make that change, just like you talked about, Tom, raises that are above COLAs and things like that. And it's always interesting because we're, our job is a balancing act, and then we turn over to you, and your job is to get returns that are safe, yet trying to hit the 6.75 or we get further behind. And so it's a balancing act. Supervisor Withrow is our member that's on the board, and then we have some other appointments. But it is, if it's not a collaborative effort, again, the system wouldn't work. And I think we're on a good, solid path. I would say that the original 350, because there was, the way it was at 50, yeah, 350 and 55, I think, right, 255 was our original retirement system. It was unsustainable. And so Pepper came into effect, and we're starting to see, slowly but surely, we're starting to see the positive effects, I think, which will get us on the right track. So keep up the good work. I will tell you, the portal, the member portal, from what we had just, what, three or four years ago, is so much better. So coming into the 21st century on technology is really, it's really impressive. So I would encourage you to keep doing that. It's very hard to get appointments unless you have an imminent retirement date. I've heard that from a lot of the employees. But now it doesn't matter because you can get a very solid number, so people can do their planning. So appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, Carmen, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, that was the last of our presentations. We're going to be moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so does fair for every speaker. Keep comments to the five-minute time limit. I have Card Brad Hart.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Susan Beasley, on behalf of Mo Band, and I am here to invite you to Mo Band and make an announcement about it. And I'm thrilled to be introducing our new conductor, Mr. Brad Hart, a very, very local individual who works with youth. And also unable to be with us this morning is Mr. William Melendez, also an educator, a local. He is going to be our assistant conductor this season. But first, as you well know, some of my announcements involve audience participation. So how many of us have been to Mo Band? I know, Jody, you enjoy being out there clapping and the la-la-las, so it's time to practice those la-la-las. Are we ready? La-la-la-la, 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 la-la-la, 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 la-la-la. Okay, now it's your turn. Okay, no. I need to hear a little bit of that. That's the thrill that we have every summer for six concerts at our beautiful Crusada Park. Okay, Vito, you just joined us. You missed this.
La-la-la-la.
Okay, thank you. So what does a conductor do? The conductor is out there leading the band, right? So you all have some type of writing implement in our right hand, right? Are you ready? How many of us haven't sat there or sat at some performance and done this? We know how to do that. Well, here to give you your official conductor 101 lesson is, here's Brad.
Thank you very much, Susan. So just hold out that stick. We use a baton. I won't tell you how much some of them cost, but they're not cheap all the time. But you hold that out, and you're just going to make an outward little hook. So one, two, one, two, one, two. So I'll count you off, and you're going to sing, la-la-la-la, one, two, one. La-la-la-la, la-la-la, 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 la-la-la. Wonderful. So I know we'll see all of you at the park, not just clapping and singing along, but conducting along with us. It is something, I know, for me, as a little kid, I always sat in my office chair at my desk, conducting to whatever music I could find. And now I'm lucky enough to do it as a full-time job at Johansson High School, but as well getting this opportunity this summer to start doing it with Mo Band. And it is, I grew up here in Modesto. We moved here when I was three. I have loved it ever since. We started coming to Mo Band, going to them, Modesto A's games, doing stuff in the community as my parents had moved here from San Jose. And it really became a home for us and a home for our family and a place I am so glad to continue to give back every day and every year. I know I get to see Manny every winter as we do a parade with Johansson in the airport district. We've been doing an empire with the Johansson Band. And they have become just wonderful community events. And it is great because we have multiple organizations that get to join us. And that is part of the reason why I get so excited about Mo Band, because you get to look out in the audience and in the band and see that entire community out. Last night, we had our first official rehearsal. We had 138 musicians, mostly from San Slos County, although we have one student who's here for this first week from Thailand, which is great to have her travel this entire school year, go to Johansson High School and gets to play in Mo Band. But we have 138 members this week, and they represent ages 14 to about 83 or 84 years old. They are just simply band kids who did not want to give up playing. And that is the best part about a true community band. We are definitely the largest community band anywhere west of the Mississippi. We also are a free and open community band, which means if you play an instrument, if you play a drum, you show up and you're in the band. There is no audition. There is no chair placement. We don't tell you, please don't come back, you didn't sound that good. You're just immediately part of the family. And we thought this first week is a great way to celebrate that. Our theme this week is Across Town. Not only do we have American graffiti, we have stuff like Star Wars to celebrate in town. We have high school seniors who just graduated to celebrate. So we open up with John Philip Sousa's High School Cadets, which was written for a high school band for their purpose of being able to graduate to. We have all sorts of stuff, like Dave Brubeck being celebrated with us this week, someone who was a Stockton native. And we have so much more happening this week in the summer. I'm so very excited to have it all. So hopefully you'll be able to join us this week, and hopefully we'll be able to reach our goal. I have a goal of 150 musicians on stage, and we're getting closer and closer to that. And I hope that you will help, not only in that audience, celebrate the wonderful seats we have, but the wonderful park we get to have. And of course, for us, we're also thankful that the facility we rehearse in is the Manchini Senior Hall, Senior Center, which is also a county facility with us. We are very thankful for some of the improvements that are starting to happen, continue to happen there. Of course, you can imagine, it is a very small parking lot as that senior center is in part. We have 138 musicians, and we are parking up and down the street. And that is just how dedicated these musicians are to coming out, just like you, just like the Cal Pride group, to make that impact on the community. We are thrilled to be able to do it for 106 seasons, and I look forward to so many more seasons, continuing with Modesto Band of San Slos County and our concerts in the park. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only public comment card that I had. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment about something that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and move to the consent calendar. Before the board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Any supervisor like to pull? And not only entertain a motion.
Move to approve items on consent.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous. Approval of the budget year 2026 Community Corrections Partnership Plan for 2011 Public Safety Realignment and Related Actions. Chief Eric.
Well, good morning, Chairman Condon, members of the board, CEO Hayes and County Council Bose, Mark Ferrer, the county's chief probation officer. And it is my pleasure to present to you the Community Corrections Partnership, or CCP, Public Safety Realignment Plan for Budget Year 2026. As part of the board agenda item, we have included the full 2026 CCP plan, which includes the history of the plan, outcomes, programming, and statistics. I have also asked the executive CCP members or their designees to be present if there are any questions or issues related to their specific departments. I'm going to start by providing a brief history and overview of the Community Corrections Partnership. On April 4th, 2011, then-California Governor Jerry Brown signed Assembly Bill 109, which realigned custodial and community supervision responsibilities from the state level to the local level. AB 109 made some of the largest and most pivotal changes to the criminal justice system in California history. AB 109 was enacted to address the overcrowding in California's state prison facilities and to reinvest criminal justice resources to support programs and evidence-based practices. The bill revised the definition of a felony and allowed individuals who do not have statutorily defined serious violent or sex offenses in their criminal histories or following their most recent conviction to serve their state prison sentences in county jails instead of state prison. As part of serving that local prison sentence, the legislation also allowed courts to suspend part of the sentence and release individuals on a form of community supervision entitled mandatory supervision. While on mandatory supervision, the individual is supervised in accordance with the terms, conditions, and procedures generally applicable to persons placed on probation. AB 109 also established the post-release community supervision, or PRCS, classification of supervision. Under PRCS, populations of offenders released from state prison are supervised by the counties rather than state parole. In all 58 counties, probation departments were designated by their respective boards of supervisors as the agency to supervise these releases from state prison on PRCS. At its peak, the state prison population hit 173,000 inmates. Today, the California state prison population sits under 91,000. The population continues to be at its lowest point in more than 30 years. Shortly after the signing of AB 109, Governor Brown also signed a trailer bill, Assembly Bill 117. AB 117 delayed the operative date of AB 109 to October 1st, 2011, and required each county to establish an executive community corrections partnership, or CCP. AB 117 required the executive CCP to recommend a local plan to the county board of supervisors annually for approval. The CCP executive committee is statutorily required to consist of the following individuals: chief probation officer, who is the chair, the district attorney, the sheriff, the public defender, the presiding judge of the superior court or his designee, and a chief of police, which is currently Modesto Police Chief Brandon Gillespie. Further, the legislation asks that the board of supervisors appoint one department head from social services, mental health, or the department head from alcohol and substance abuse programs. This board subsequently selected the Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Director to serve in this capacity. Annually, each county is given an allocation of funding to manage the AB 109 population. This funding referred to as 2011 Public Safety Realignment is funded by a portion of state sales tax revenue that is directed to 2011 Public Safety Realignment programs. Funding is allocated using a permanent formula based on caseload size, crime population, and other special factors that determine county-by-county base allocation shares. State sales tax receipts in excess of prior-year base amounts are deemed as growth and distributed to counties using a separate formula, consisting of reducing the number of probation failures statewide and reducing the number of state prison commitments for new convictions. Growth funds received for a given fiscal year increase the base in the following fiscal year. This is known as a rolling base. Should state sales tax receipts fall short of prior-year base amounts, counties will receive base allocation shares of the amount received. Growth funding will not resume until the highest prior-year base has been restored. This is the 15th year that we have brought the CCP plan before this board, with all 14 prior plans being approved. Historically, the CCP has funded positions for law enforcement, district attorney, public defender, behavioral health and recovery services, and community-based organizations. As the county's chief probation officer, I also remain thankful for this board's support with funding deputy probation officers who provide community supervision of the AB 109 population and with your support of our Day Reporting Center, which serves as a one-stop-shop for the population to receive needed treatment and services. Over the last two years, we have provided this board with an opportunity to hear from individuals who have benefited from the services and opportunities available at the Day Reporting Center. This year, we would like to introduce Juan, who will share his story about the Day Reporting Center and the two contracted vendors that he accessed at the facility. Leaders in Community Alternatives, also known as LCA, who provides employment-based services, and Learning Quest, who provides high school equivalency-based services. So I'll invite Juan up to the podium.
Good morning.
I'm here today to be able to give a little testimony of before, during, and what I see myself after probation. Hi, my name is Juan Seham, and I would like to speak a little bit of my life before I got on probation to how everything turned out after being on probation. It was 12 to 13 years since the last time I was ever in any kind of trouble with law enforcement. I have been nothing but a good and hardworking man and a loving father to my children. I had a job working in a warehouse, had my own place. I was living my life best as I could, just going day by day. I was arrested in 2023. After my arrest, things went downhill. I didn't know how bad things could get. I spent months job searching. I was unsuccessful at this point. I was already wanting to give up, and I ran through all my funds and didn't have anything else to keep going. I had lost my car. All my bills were getting shut off. I had lost all my food. I had no family in my corner. No family in my corner for help, and the mother of my children was wanting to take my children from me. I was at a breaking point in my life. I was wanting to give up. I had nothing else but wanted to let go. I had to find myself on the side of an overpass, wanting to let go and throw in the towel. I felt like I had nothing else to live for, to even want to keep going, but I couldn't come to it because of all the love that I have for my children. have for my children, and I couldn't stop thinking about them. It was their love that kept me from jumping that night. The next day, I found myself going into my probation officer's office, asking to speak with him, and I broke down explaining everything I was going through, and I asked him for any kind of help. I was so thankful to God that my probation officer was so helpful that he helped me get into the LCA program. I attended intake with LCA, and while I was there, I was giving information to help to get my utilities back on. I called the 211. I was giving information with agencies that could help me turn my utilities back on. I lasted a few months without my utilities, and CBOC was the agency that helped me turn them back on. I started LCA and set a goal for attending vocational training. Before I could do that, I needed to complete 32 classes with LCA and get my GED as well. I started attending GED classes, which meant I was at the DRC five days a week. It was a really hard challenge for being there five days a week, with my only transportation at the time was walking with the city bus. And that didn't include when I would have to try to make it after class to catch the bus, to go pick up my four children all the way in series, and have to wait or walk for another bus to go back home. And the same when the night came and they had to go back to their mother's house. My hard work paid off. I received several certificates from LCA such as OSHA-Forklift certification, my food handler certificate, as well as a certificate for completion 32 weeks with them. I got my GED and was also awarded a certificate from Learning Quest for best effort. I was given a life-changing opportunity of getting into Vocational Training School to become an electrician. I'm currently attending Volk. In the three months I have been there, I have learned how to wire a motor and a transformer, and also my PLCs, which is programming logic computers. All out of a really bad situation and me losing all hope, my probation gave me and showed me a different way. All that help opened up doors for me. I have bigger plans for my future. I have learned that I am incapable of doing so much more than I believe that I was able to. I am thankful because after I'm done with my vocational training, they also help with job placement, to be able to begin and start my career as an electrician. Thank you.
So building off of our base staffing levels for fiscal year 2025, the executive CCP is employing a status quo budget with just one technical adjustment for the budget year 2026 CCP Plan. Since fiscal year 2015, the board of supervisors has approved funding for the probation department to contract with the Modesto Police Department for a crime analyst. Since the approval of the funding, the contracted crime analyst has been tasked with measuring the effectiveness of programming at the day reporting center, evaluating recidivism rates, and providing presentations on outcomes to stakeholders, including to this board during a prior CCP Plan presentation. The CCP Executive Committee is recommending moving the allocation for the contracted crime analyst position into the probation department's salaries and benefits allocation. The recommended adjustment of funding would allow for the contracted position to instead become an employee of the probation department. This recommendation is a cost-neutral adjustment and does not add any new funding to the five-year recommended spending plan. The position has been included in the county's 2026 proposed budget set to go to the board of supervisors on June 10th, 2025. On the screen in front of you is the budget year 2026 spending plan, which includes up to $43.85 million in expenditures and $32.79 million in anticipated revenue. It includes $19.98 million in available fund balance to start budget year 2026, should we spend 100% of our allocated funds in fiscal year 2025. It also includes the use of as much as $11.05 million of fund balance. On the screen in front of you is the five-year estimated spending plan. If 100% of the five-year plan was spent, it would result in a deficit in budget year 2027. Historically, the CCP only incurs an average of 81.9% of expenditures. With a conservative assumption of 85% built into the estimated spending plan, the executive CCP does not project any deficits in the next three fiscal years. On the slide before you, we have created a graph that depicts what would occur to the CCP budget over a five-year period if percentages of the CCP funding plan were expended. The very bottom blue line represents what would occur if 100% of the five-year plan was spent. As you can see, the CCP would incur a deficit of $53 million at 100% in budget year 2030. Spending 90% of planned expenditures over five years would result in a deficit of $25 million. 85% are average of 81.9%, and 80% of spending are also broken down on the chart before you. Our break-even point is 81.1% over the five-year spending plan. In fiscal year 2024, the CCP spent 79% of expenditures resulting any fund balance to start fiscal year 2025 of $31.88 million. As part of the fiscal year 2022 plan, the executive CCP established a policy of maintaining 20% of projected revenue and fund balance, which represents the dotted line on the graph before you. The CCP Executive Committee will continue to meet, monitor expenditures, and make budgetary adjustments and recommendations throughout the next year as necessary. And I would also like to add that the CCP does expect to see significant short-term savings. The public defender's offices, recent cancellation of a sizable contract with an outside vendor, and vacancies with departments funded through the CCP should result in a savings that will reduce our reliance on fund balance. On the screen in front of you is the sole recommendation from the CCP Executive Committee, which is to approve the budget year 2026 Community Corrections Partnership Plan for 2011 Public Safety Realignment. And with that, we are open for questions from the board.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Chair. First of all, Juan, you're going to be a great spokesperson for programs and programming, and I'm sorry you came close to doing something you might have regretted, but yet the man you are here standing before us is unbelievable. So I wish you the best going forward. I also appreciate that, you know, we talk about fund balance and the moral of the story is don't spend too much of it, right? We get caught in that situation all the time, and we've had these discussions, and I think this is, I like the budget that you brought forward. The one thing that's hanging out there that we've discussed before is the incompetent to stand trial. I still haven't seen a plan on how we're going to deal with it, but for the public's certification, it's not anything that we did internally that had to do with the number of folks that might have ended up in a state hospital in the past, or if they're found incompetent to stand trial, if we go over a certain number, we could find, we can get the fine back from the state of California if we have a program where we show how we're going to lower that number. But having said that, it was kind of an arbitrary number that was picked, but yet the funding still has to leave our county and go to the state, and it's a big number. And so we have to deal with that. I know some of that comes through, potentially is going to come to the CCP. Can you give me some insight as to how we're trying to deal with that? I call it a fine. Is it called a fine?
Yes, and the CCP will be meeting to discuss this on June 24th to discuss the payment of the IST fine. I know the ask has been that the CCP pay half of the fine. The fine, as I understand it, is $3.975 million, and I think the half of the fine would be paid out of the collaborative court allocation through Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, and the other half would be paid for out of fund balance that BHRS has in special revenue.
Okay, and that's coming to us, it's going to come to this board?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. There will be an item coming for the board that outlines what's occurred so far with the IST issue, what the trends have been, and what do we see as a financing strategy to meet that obligation with the state of California. Our Behavioral Health Department has been in touch with the state of California, trying to ensure that the process and the strategy that Chief Ferrer just laid out would be consistent with their expectations. So there's a lot of work in progress here, and it is coming to the board.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mark.
Chance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, great presentation. Really appreciate it. Thank you and to your team, all your staff doing phenomenal work. I know I've had the opportunity to ride out with you guys in the past, looking forward to doing so in the future, but just keep going. You guys are doing great. And I do want to acknowledge Juan. Thank you for being brave today and sharing your testimony with us. That was definitely impactful, heartfelt, and just we want to appreciate you. We are a country of second chances, sometimes third and fourths. Lord knows we've all needed a second chance sometime in our lives. So you're a great example of what someone can do by taking a negative situation and turning it into a positive one. So just keep going. Stay with it. Hang tough. You're doing phenomenal job, and I just want to thank you today for being brave enough to come in up and sharing that testimony. Thank you again.
Thanks, Mark. Great presentation. Thank you for doing that. And the same thing, Juan. Great job. Just how proud we all are of you, and just think how proud your kids are of you. So thank you for all you're doing, and it warms our heart to know this is working. I know when AB 109 first happened 15 years ago, the sky was falling as far as we were concerned, and this was kind of the end of the world, and we've turned that around, took the lemons and made lemonade out of it. I'd say, and Juan, you're a perfect example of just how much better of a job I think that we can do here locally as far as helping individuals versus what happens at the state level. So thank you guys for all you're doing. Just a quick question, IST thing. I know the presentation is going to come to the board, but hopefully we're going to talk about trying to reduce the IST individuals and what we're doing to try to, not just to fund the fines, but I know we're going to talk about that too, on where we think the issue is and how we can reduce the amount of incompetent-to-stand-trial individuals. Jody, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, absolutely. So we would definitely love to see strategies coming from all stakeholders involved in this process to reduce the number of ISTs that are impacting our systems. It's in everyone's interest to do that. So that's something we're coordinating the conversations from the chief executive office, but it really does require the stakeholders that work with the population to surface what are the best strategies and options in order to reduce IST referrals.
Perfect. Okay, we'll look forward to getting that from all the stakeholders. And then, Mark, just real quick, tell me about growth as far as a source of funding here. We, I know, I can see it here, we're anticipating no growth. In the past, history, we have had growth funds coming. Is that correct? Tell me, straighten me out here if I know what I'm talking about.
That is correct. We are trying to be conservative with our fiscal, I think, outlook and planning. We generally don't try to plan on growth because, number one, it's based on the excess that goes over the base, and, you know, state sales tax comes in under projections, under base, we're not going to get any growth. So the January budget projected growth, I think it was right around $80 million statewide to be distributed according to performance with individual counties. The May revise came in and projected growth from $80 million to right around $26 million. So we're just going to play things very conservative in our planning and anticipate that we're not going to get any growth over time. If we do, tremendous, we'll add it in. But otherwise, I think the CCP is trying to take a more conservative outlook on things and trying to plan like we aren't going to get any growth. And if we do, tremendous. If we don't, that's okay. We've planned accordingly.
Okay. No, I appreciate your conservativeness. For the year in the June 30, 2025, which will come up any, do we have a number yet as to what that, was there a growth amount in there?
Yeah, well, the May revise projects that, you know, 26 million.
Which we'll get.
Right around, I would say right around 1.09% roughly is what we're kind of tracking and looking at. So if we do end up with growth, you know, it'd probably be about $270,000 roughly for us. But again, we're not banking on that because we just don't know.
Okay, thank you. Good job.
Well, I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues. It's, we get presentations all the time, you see, that we get presentations, but it's the real-life stories like yours, Juan, that, you know, really show that all the programs that we as a county and the different partnerships we have in the county, the effect that they're having on human beings and residents of Stanislaus County. Continue your hard work. I feel that you are on the right path, and your children are proud, your family are proud, and everyone here is supportive in any way that we can be of making you even more successful than you have been. Thanks for the presentation, Mark, and for all the partners that were involved in putting together the partnership and the program. Thank you.
Chief, and partners that are out there, thank you for your presentation and all the information. And Juan, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something and say just thank you for sharing your story and just keep grinding. Keep grinding, buddy. You're a great story. All right. We're going to go ahead and open public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the board for any last comments and a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve all staff recommendations.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Board Supervisor Reports. Seeing none. Actually, last week, I got to ride out with the community assessment, response, and engagement unit, our care team, and just a great experience. Contacted a lot of homeless individuals along the Stanislaus River and the riverbank in Oakdale community. Just the great job that the team does in trying to establish a relationship with the folks that are down there and suffering, really just leaving them no excuse to try to accept help. And I was just impressed with the professionalism and the tenacity of the team to try to help these individuals out. Got to witness a lot of great interactions, and I just wanted to say, Raul, thank you for taking me out. I appreciate it, and you guys do good work. Legislative Fiscal and Management Report.
Yeah, good morning. So I do want to just recognize that there's a flurry of activity happening at the state capitol now that all of the bills are being winnowed down, and I think we're all tracking that the state budget must be passed by June 15th at midnight. So lots of negotiations going on for the next couple of weeks, along with all those bills that are at critical stages. But what I'm very pleased to announce this morning is that with us this morning is Jose Michelle, who has been appointed to service the Director of Aging and Veteran Services for Stanislaus County. So Jose's here. Welcome to the leadership team, Jose. Very, very happy to have you. With Christine Huber there, Jose was previously in charge of adult services at the Community Services Agency. It just brings a wonderful amount of experience, dedication, and passion to serving our veterans and aging community. So we're very, very happy to have you with us, Jose. Thanks for sticking out today's meeting. Also required by government code section 54953 to report anytime we hire a new department head. The annual salary and benefits, in this case, Jose's annual salary will be approximately $162,531 per year, and we will be receiving benefits consistent with all county department heads. So that concludes my report today.
Thank you. Manning.
Yeah, sorry, I missed the part on the supervisor. You went right in, and I thought it was over. But I would be remiss if I didn't talk about this week, we opened up Jenny's Place, 54-unit transitional youth housing in partnership with in partnership with Stanislaus County, City of Modesto's leadership. The Governor's Office and State of California gave about $17 million of the $24 million in funds to make this project come to fruition. And the special part for me is it was named after my former colleague, the late Jenny Canoyer. And I know she was very tenacious and very passionate about helping the youth and the underserved in our community. So it was such a fitting naming of that facility as Jenny's Place. And it had the nice bright colors and palm trees. So in my comments that day, I said Jenny would approve of the decor and the color combinations. But again, it was a fitting tribute and something that's very necessary in our community. And it was nice to see so many partner agencies come together. Center for Human Services, State of California, CSOC, Stanislaus County, City of Modesto, and then KH Builders, if I don't have that wrong. They were the development partner. But again, all in all, a great new facility in Modesto.
Thanks, Manning. All right, we're going to go ahead and adjourn, and we do have closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this morning. We have two items. The first is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Ryan Leo, Joanna Novaro. And the labor organizations are listed there in the agenda. Second item is a conference with legal counsel. Existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision D1. We have three cases to consider. County of Stanislaus versus Wolfgang Bach et al. That's in the Stanislaus County Superior Court. The case number is CB 23001473. The second case is YB, a minor through GAL, Maria Prado et al. versus the County of Stanislaus et al. That's in the Superior Court of Stanislaus County, and the case number is 22004044. The third case is Lopez et al. versus County of Stanislaus et al. That's in the Eastern District of California. And the case number is 225, CB 01175. And with that, appropriate for public comment?
Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session. Deputy Taylor, thank you for your overwatch.